You were screaming and all that.
Oh, yeah, my voice is just thin. All right, so welcome, everybody. Time is 6:32, opening the meeting. As I'm sure you can probably tell, I do sound different. I am not sick. I've spent the last four days screaming and announcing basically using my voice straight, so it's just vocal fatigue. So you're okay there. With that being said, let's go ahead and do our normal thing and open with pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so I'd like to actually, before we go to our roll call of board members, I want to point out that at the same time, 6:30, every Monday right now during the summer, library has their reading program going on. So if you thought you were gonna see something more entertaining, that's next door. So roll call of board members. Dave Hemmway, I'm the select board chair.
Marla Herrick.
Normandy Blake.
All right, and as for our normal, we do have the streaming and recording going. So of course, we will be using mics every time that we are speaking or dealing with things. Do we have any specific announcements?
I do not.
I don't either.
All right, I don't do either of you.
No.
All right, so we'll go ahead and skip that. And we have appointments and some business and correspondence, I believe. Based on the description of the appointment topic, do you believe that we should jump into that or that we should save that for the end and non-public session?
We might finish your normal business first.
Normal business first.
So quickly.
Okay, so I will jump across appointments and we'll come back to for John Pearson and Tara. And we will jump into old business. So that's White Plains Bridge easement update. I believe that would be Dana.
Yeah, I did receive an email from Aaron today, which I forwarded to you, so you may have seen that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Forgot myself.
Testing, one, two, three, okay, great. I did receive an email from Aaron, the engineer, today. She was writing to update me on the box culvert, which I thought was very positive because I've been wanting to be in the loop. She is addressing still the weapons permit, New Hampshire, DES, and she's also getting the box culvert quote for the actual purchase. She mentioned when she hears that from the vendors, she's using, sending out quotes to three vendors. She would like a special meeting with the board to talk about those. And at that time, talking about purchasing the culvert. Go ahead.
Well, okay, so where are the plans now? They're in DES's hands?
I don't believe so because someone from here has to sign them. And I'm not gonna ask this.
So, and I haven't done a lot of box culverts in my lifetime, but we've done a couple. So, you know, usually there's plans that they, that they sign off on, which then would state the exact size and shape of the culvert that's needed. Is she feeling good that she knows that they're going to approve the plans that she's come up with with no problem?
That is why I asked her to come in and talk with you because I was of the opinion that we should have the permit approved by the state. She feels that if we delay ordering a culvert, it would delay the project all that much further. She's also told me, and that's okay with however it is, that she does not have the state question a culvert in her experience.
Oh, I mean, that could be true.
Do we have the specifications for that culvert? Because I believe Marla had somebody that she was gonna be able to request a quote from as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know who are the three people that she's had.
Mitchie and Hannaker.
Yeah, yeah.
CSI and Hudson and Correa and Millbury, Vermont.
Yeah, so yeah, Mitchie's would be.
Mitchie's probably one, yeah.
Yeah, so that's fine.
Yeah. All right. Any further questions or comments about White Plains Bridge from the board?
No, let's get it done.
All right, anybody in the, anybody else here is public that has a question or comment on that? Yes, John?
Hi. Listening to the selectman meeting here a week or two ago, you, those comments on the engineer. I brought this forward to the previous board here a year or so ago. I don't even believe this engineer should be working for this town. She cost us $150,000, $200,000 on Close Man Bridge. She designed that bridge, and that money just went down the river. I don't believe the woman's qualified to do any work in this town. I don't think this town can afford to lose $150,000, $200,000 engineering bridges. And we don't even get our money back. That bridge could not be built. This town almost voted to have that bridge built. But a friend of mine works for Edie Sweat, Edie Sweat Bridge Company. He owns it. He called me up two days before town meeting. It was in our town warrant to vote on it. He called me up, told me to call the state because the state sent the select board a letter telling how poorly that bridge design was, that it could not be built. So a friend of mine at Edie Sweat called me up and told me I need to get down to the state and get that letter that was sent to the board of selectmen. And I did. So I stirred a pretty big stink to the board of selectmen. So a day before town meeting, they held a special meeting and, oh, we got some new information. And we decided maybe we should not go forward with this bridge. I don't know why this engineer is still working in this town. We've had five years working on this bridge down here, and we still don't even have all the people signed up to get the land that we need.
Yeah, so I would say your comments are definitely pertinent and, but the board that is sitting in front of you, we're just trying to get things done.
I know, but it's been five years.
Already obviously been going on for quite some time. Fortunately, we do have plans now that should be getting submitted to DES. And so once DES approves that, then we are good to go and we can actually do this particular project. Regarding the other bridge, I wasn't on the board. I can't really comment on it further than that. So, but that's also not pertinent to White Plains Bridge right now. So hopefully, we can just get this done.
But as I understand it.
Definitely one of the reasons why people such as myself have reservations just saying, hey, let's go order something until we get the permits back.
But as I understand it, last week or so, when you were discussing this engineer, you was talking about getting permission from the landowners. And they were passing the buck on whose job it was to get this permission done.
I, oh, I'm sorry. I went to that meeting when they met at the bridge and all that. And what I understand, because there was the owners, Mrs. Hell, I don't know. I never met her before. And then the Sullivans were there, and they seemed all right to go with it now. And I stressed about 10 times that, and Dana was there. We've been at this five years, it's time to move. And she seemed, the engineer seemed, you know, she kinda said, yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right. So I think she got the hit that five years is a long time for that one little thing.
Me, she not doing her job?
So, well, that's, I mean, that's what I said there. I knew the people, basically, I could've got the signatures too, but I guess you need certain people.
In one day.
Yeah, right, exactly. So, but I think, I'm hoping, I mean, now that we've got money already, you know, into it, to change horses now would be costly. So we're pushing her, believe me, we're all pushing her to get it done.
I hope you understand what I'm trying to say. Let's, in the future, let's look and get rid of her.
Can you update us on those signatures? We have all of it now, correct? We do have all of it. And I've asked her to redo the plans, but she wasn't really gonna affect the Austins. And since the person that needs to sign for the Austins is in the Virgin Islands, and we hadn't heard, to make it go forward, she's done a little bit of changing the plans so we're not onto the Austins land. And we do have the others, the three others, my four act, the Sullivans, and Mr. and Mrs. Hell.
So, so everything, but we don't have a copy of the plans. She's submitting to DES.
I have a copy of the plans of the bridge. I have not seen a copy of the plans she's sending to DES. Hopefully, it's the same plan I have.
But, but I, you know, I don't think that would be a bad thing to request. That shouldn't be hard for you. Not that, not that we're all gonna look at the plans and go, oh, yeah. But at least we can make sure that, like you pointed out, you did a good job knowing that we didn't really need this other person. So stop saying that's holding up the situation. You know, you personally shouldn't have to do that, but whatever, you do what you gotta do.
I'm also trying to make this go forward.
Well, no, right.
We have to, the board has to sign those plans, the application to DES. And so obviously, we'll have that at that time.
And I did tell her that if we, she gets them together, we select people, we can all meet and sign them in the morning or whatever, when she gets them right away.
Yeah, no, this is ridiculous.
Speaking of that, since we had gotten to that point previously, has she given you a date or a time expectation of when we will be doing that so that the DES plans and application go forward?
Seeing she wants to get a price. I mean, prices are usually good for 30 days, so from what many time I ask her. Because concrete could go up, everything could go up.
She mentions in her email, she's asked each company to update their estimate and provide a scheduled delivery. If we order the product within the next two weeks, it seems the box would most likely be available for installation in November. She does not, so that's the only reference to time that I see. Go ahead, John.
What is the price of this culvert if you order it, buy it? And for some reason, it ain't gonna fit or it doesn't pass.
We're gonna need to see the quotes. That's part of what we're waiting for. It's probably $100,000, I think.
I don't see how we could afford to take the gamble. If it doesn't fit, you lost another $100,000 down the river again because the engineer hasn't got things done yet.
All right, so I believe that's gonna complete the White Plains update. Now we have other old businesses or kind of new business as well. Review of town policies? We have spoken about reviewing town policies. I know you haven't had much chance to read these. We did pick a few of the low-hanging fruit to start with. I don't know if the board wishes to continue tonight if you'd like to read these and that you would have had a subsequent meeting. This is part of the project to make the code book. All right, and which policies did you have?
Going alphabetically, and we're five of them. So the first five of the town policies page on the website, and we go down to the email policy. So it's the accounting, the agenda, the credit card, email, and then I think it's the alarm policy right there.
Yeah, so we've got alarm ordinance and driveway regulations that are there, but those aren't policies.
Right, the driveway regulation is not included in that. Because that's plain A and B.
So what does the board feel? Do you want to read them individually and then come back next time? Or do you want to start going over them now?
I would rather read them than, even if we have a work session or something. Because this is one page piece.
Yeah, and so the first one, for example.
That's right, we're taking a lot of work.
Is the accounting policies. About eight pages, so. Okay, so the first five of them, and we'll prepare to come back at the next meeting and discuss those. And if we want to update them or reaffirm them, et cetera. All right, so that brings us then into new business. Do we have any of that? I have a few items that I'm gonna call in business. And one is, basically, it is housekeeping. And it is the appointment of a part-time police officer for the police department. This is the, so I need a motion for anyone to have that signed, please.
We all signed, okay.
All right, and while we look over this, does police chief wanna speak to that at all?
I can, be happy to. So, the officer that we're gonna hire, hopefully. Name's John Rafley. He's a 24-year veteran of the Northfield Police Department. He's currently the chief. He is retiring on the 24th of September. And he's willing to work for us as many days as we need. Highly qualified, very well, very well. He's doing a great job, and he will. And he can work any shifts. He lives just a few minutes away, and he'll be good.
Oh, that's something. Boy, you must be twisting arms, huh?
It's who you know.
Yeah, exactly.
And this is just, this is just because we're still, you're feeling so understaffed for?
We've only got, right now, we only have really two part-times. We normally have four. And the good thing about the part-time is they don't cost us anything. They cost us nothing. Every part-time we have is full-time certified, so that all trained, all ready. The only lift supply is the uniform. And we're good to go.
So no, no new vehicles or anything?
No, no, none of that. They need a uniform, you don't need a ballistic vest, which is a thousand dollars saved, so that's good.
Wasn't this, chief, because you had an officer resign, a part-time resign?
Yep.
All right.
Well, and it comes all trained, that's always the plus.
All trained, that's the point.
How do we properly pronounce his last name?
It's Rafley.
Rafley.
Rafley. I write F-F-I-E-L-L-Y.
Oh, spelling only to get fixed, then. I would speak to be.
Sorry.
A-E-L-L-Y, A-E-L-L-Y.
All right.
So is it right or right?
It's A-E-L-L-Y.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay, well, in any case, I would make the motion that we go ahead and allow our police department to hire this John Rafio.
Rafley.
Rafley, as a part-time officer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
All three's.
Who's saying in the middle, I think?
Right in the middle.
Has a question.
We have a question.
Jay has a question, yes.
Everybody, if there was, can I, I just have to ask you, but the question goes to Steve. Who did we lose and why?
One of our officers moved to Florida. Sold his house, was living here and moved to Florida.
Good thing, yeah.
His wife wanted to go. He didn't, but his wife did.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any further new business? I just have some paperwork for you to sign. You could sign out the beginning, the abatements, but it's, but nothing else. That moves us on to correspondence, then. Do we have correspondence? We did, but we removed it because it's been resolved, so no. Okay. I like the. Russell's gonna mention it, though.
Well, we were gonna mention that. When people come in for ZBA applications, the select board first has to deny them. And did we want to make it so that I can do the denial so they don't have to go before the select board? So I don't know if you want to make a motion so that I can just do it so it'll speed her off? Please along the process for the applicants.
For the applicants. You're gonna make it faster because we don't, we don't get to overturn that anyways.
Right, and we'll make it so they don't have to come to the select board meeting with the letter to get it denied. Instead, I can just deny it right in the office when they come in with the application and then makes it potentially after two weeks quicker.
Because that kinda happened to the people that brought the files down. So, yeah, where they, they just had to come on and we, there's nothing we could do even if we wanted to say we don't agree with this. It was, yeah.
Yes, so that's my point.
This is specifically only for business exemptions, correct?
Correct, for commercial exemptions.
We don't have to make a policy change at all somewhere?
So this is, in the zoning ordinance, it says, as one of the people, like the town official or somebody acting in the town's capacity. For example, the building inspector, if you want to have the building inspector do it, or someone like me or Dana could do it. But I think the board needs to give us permission to be able to do that.
Sounds good to me.
All right, any other comment or question on that?
No.
No.
All right, so I would move that we allow Russ to give his John Hancock on these saying that we are denying business.
Commercial exceptions.
Commercial exceptions blanketly to send them to the ZBA as their zoning requirements require.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right, aye.
Aye. All right, and that moves us to the typical public comment section. I believe we had a hand right back here just a second ago as we were starting into our new business area. And so if you would like to come up and let us know what is on your mind. I think we know who you are, but yes, that's a good idea. That's the typical protocol.
My name is Kim Fortune. I just have a question, whereas you had earlier explained that the board was gonna be reviewing town policies. Just a quick question. Will that be a separate meeting, where you're gonna review the policies in? And in regards to that, I know that previously, granted, a couple of years ago, I had in fact read the town policies. And my concern at that point in time is, is there in fact a conflict of interest section within our policy currently? And if not, would the board consider inserting one?
So.
Can I ask, so, so can you give me like an example of what your?
From my, in the policy, town policies and procedures, upon my review and granted, I'm saying this was a couple of years ago, it's approximately 33 pages on my particular review, and I, granted, I may in fact be wrong. So I just want to clarify. Is there in fact a section that covers conflict of interest within our town policies? Be that applicable to administrators, subcontractors, or whatever the case may be. I do not involve seeing any conflict of interest section within our town policy whatsoever. If in fact it's not, will, will you be inserting one, I guess? Is my question.
So I know that there are various things for conflict of interest. I don't remember whether they are specific in the town policy or not. Some of them are, of course, good recommendations and guidelines on good governance, such as would come from NHMA. Others are things, for example, if you are acting as an adjudicating body, for example, as the planning board may do in some circumstances, you would typically recuse yourself if, for example, you are in a butter. Those sorts of things are, I believe, in the RSAs for the conflict of interest for that type of work. As far as inserting one, if we don't have one, I would certainly be open to that discussion with the board. I can't say that we would or would not based on what's already there and/or what already covers it. And if we need to add or not in order to prevent conflicts between policy, RSA, et cetera. Did you have something to say, Russ, or was I just seeing something move out of this corner of my eye? So, so that's where I would put that. I would absolutely say, if anyone has a particular topic that they would like to see addressed, changed, or have questions about on any of our policies, which we believe are all available right on the ordinances and policies section on the front of our website. If anyone has questions, concerns, or things they think need to be updated, please let Dana or Russ know, and we'll make sure that we get to see that when we're talking about it in further detail.
And I thank you very much for that. And in all due respect, I just wanna kind of reiterate, recognizing that you had in fact said it would be common protocol to recuse yourself, although sometimes if in fact it's not in written policy, in black and white, in certain instances, unfortunately, maybe they become a mere oversight where that has not happened. I think if in fact we have it in a written policy, it gives clarity to everyone and it gives an opportunity for everyone to do their job in the best interest of the town.
Thank you.
And just a consideration, something that, in my review, I did not see a conflict of interest section within our policies and procedures. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and if you've got more, that's okay. I do wanna also comment, though, that it's important to note that sometimes a conflict of interest is not a conflict of interest, especially in situations like planning board, where someone may appear to have a conflict of interest but actually be more a subject matter expert. So there are lots of different subtleties to look at there. So how we would word something would be extremely important if we're going to include it. Of course, we would be looking at NHMA and probably legal to do any of those changes if we needed to. But it's important to stress and note that just because someone may be involved in something similar or maybe down the street from somebody, that might actually make them a better person to be part of it instead of a conflicted party. So you do have to weigh both those pros and cons, and we'll get both sides of it depending on the particular instance.
Thank you very much. And just as you would say, you can, you're in hopes that people will recuse themselves, but that doesn't necessarily always happen. And recognizing that, again, the municipal association, as you referred, is for guidance. That's all fair and well. But when it comes to actual situations, we wanna know that we have that in written policy, don't we? I understand, I understand education. I understand expertise and being able to contribute to the conversation or the situation whatsoever in whatever incident that may be, whether it be zoning, planning, whatever the case may be. And that's all great. But if in fact we have a conflict of interest policy, that's beyond guidelines. And I'm not quite sure that I've seen that in our 32 pages of policies and procedures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It looks like we have another comment on that.
Well, my, I can yell out now. My question was, it was gonna be about public input towards the town policies. And so how many, who writes the actual policies? I know the select board does, and they sign them. But how many discussions do you have with the public? You know, anybody that has some input for it? How does that work?
So I can't really speak to the past on how it's been done on everything. And I think it's also important to note that not all policies are the same or carry the same weight. So, for example, the one that I can talk about is one that I was part of in initiating, which was the COVID-19 policy that we had for a while. That was somewhere along the lines of 10 or so different meetings because it was primarily for the town offices and. the town offices and the police department. We were speaking with all of the different employees, all the different people who were handling all of the incoming residents, et cetera. Uh, and then we had several different meetings, uh, including guidance from the state, guidance from the library associations and our library. We also took lots of different input from, uh, everybody that was showing up to the various select board meetings, made sure that it was known as a topic. And then we kinda took all of that together, uh, came up with basically a draft uh, and then addressed that for another meeting or two and then eventually signed off on it. Uh, after we had put. Make and use the guidelines from, you know, our health officer and so on and so forth, all the way down through. So generally, if you're coming up with something new, you try to involve people a lot. You try to make sure you've got all of the experts and the people it's affecting involved.
Right.
For other policies in general, we are looking at the policies that already exist.
That's what I'm talking about.
And in most cases, uh, it's as simple as this is the policy. And unless we decide to open it up and try to change it, that that's still the policy. In some instances, for example, uh, it was also last year, the first policy that we'll actually be looking at based on alphabetics, the accounting policies, that came up and was reaffirmed, uh, after discussion with the lawyers, our treasurer, uh, other finance administrators, our town administrator and NHMA and legal. Uh, so we're like, hey, this this is the way it is, it all looks perfect, it's past muster. We don't need to change it, we're just gonna sign off on it. And that happened, I think, through one meeting mentioning it and then one meeting doing it. So it's going to vary. But absolutely, at this point in time, we are looking at going through them all. Primarily from a, these probably are just things we're going to reaffirm and make sure we're all aware of. But if there are specific comments from the public or other employees, et cetera, this is the time because we are already going to be looking at it. And so if we agree that that would make sense to do, then we could move forward in that direction.
Okay, cause I know, and and some of the policies I've looked at, the wording, it's like, you know, if you read a couple of lines in the Bible, you see one, you hear one thing, I hear another thing. And so the wording is gonna have to be so careful in a lot of the, you know, in the updates of these policies. So I just wanted to know, you know, how much public input, do you have a meeting that you're talking policies and can the public come to that meeting?
At this point, we haven't set that up, it's kind of on our plate at this point in time. I guess I'll just ask the the board, do you guys wanna try to do a, uh, a standard work session style for this? Or do you wanna cover a few at like each meeting as we go through?
It doesn't matter to me. I mean, I I haven't looked at these policies, I'd like to read them first, but I, you know, it's up to you. I mean, I can work either way, I can take time off for the daytime one, so.
I I personally feel that it's easier for people to come to these as they're they're after hours. I think it would, and again, I'm just speaking for me. I think it would make sense if we had, for example, okay, we think we do want to change a given policy or add a given policy. I think it would probably make sense to have a work session to hash out what we think that might look like and then present it at a meeting afterwards.
Could you also do something like look it over and be like, she said, I mean, I haven't run every policy. I mean, run all my policies at work, no, I'm just kidding, that I probably wrote, no. So so I just want to make sure, I I could we also do where we 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 have our work session, review it and then we put it out there on the website and say, any public comment, would that be weird to do?
We can certainly do that.
And then that way, cause cause I even, to me, I need to admit it to, as I just sit here and listen, I need a minute to think about it. I don't wanna make a quick decision that, you know, like say, oh yeah, let's next week have, we'll do the first four policies, you know, and I'll be here. Not that I mind being here forever, I'm I'm not trying to say that, it's just, it's just it might be, everybody can gather their thoughts, review it. And then if they have some, and then, you know, some might not have any thoughts on some of them. Somebody might say, well, this policy to me, and then, because also with policies, does legal review, legal reviews it too, right? Most of the time?
At least in the pattern of my experience with them.
Well, I mean, I don't, I'm not, I'm not a law writer, like she wrote it like Tara one and O. I can interpret something totally different than somebody else. I like to look at things a little different sometimes, I suppose. So so I would be, I wouldn't wanna be that person saying, well, oh, it's gotta be this way, cause and then they look at it this way, you know?
If you get five warriors in the same room, they'll all have a different interpretation too.
I know, and we don't wanna spend tons of money on policies that that make, but but if there's a few out there that some of our townspeople have, would like to see adjusted, then we can take their comments via an email or whatever, or on the site. And then we could look at it and then have legal look it over, does that make sense?
Yeah, so I think it's important that, uh, we also understand the differences between, like, some policies are fairly simple. Some policies, like, again, going back to the COVID policy, was basic boilerplate given to us by NHMA's lawyers. And so all we had to do was say, we're gonna do this, this, and this, and that was the policy we didn't have to run through or.
Oh, right, 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 okay, so, yes, but you also took all kinds of comments from everybody and you're, okay, yes, agreed.
So so absolutely, um, especially if something is a divisive topic, absolutely, it would probably need to. It would be smart for us to put it through legal, um, and so I would be supporting that. But the, as far as our process of going over them, I think we can either look to go into a work session and then cover a whole ton of them, or maybe all of them if we pre-read everything. Because I don't think, like, I don't think we're gonna have more than like maybe a question or two on each policy. And maybe one or two things that people are interested in changing or adding or clarifying. And I don't think we really need to spend a lot of time on anything. So that's why if we wanted to do three, four, or five policies at each normal meeting and then, okay, it looks like we actually have more that we wanna talk about on a specific policy, let's set aside a time and a work session or something for that. Uh, I think that's one possible option as well, instead of the mass work session. I'm open to either one, um, but.
We might wanna check something, some, I mean, I haven't looked at the policies at all, so we might wanna check to see what other towns have done in that same area. So maybe.
That could be worthwhile. I see Dana looking at us like he wants to talk.
I think a lot of your policies are kind of boilerplate that were, you know, taken from the municipal association. I know the investment policy is taken right through the auditors, um, that type of thing. So I think, um, and I don't think you have any annual policies.
So why is this all coming back to us now?
Well, it's only me, because I, you know, it's always me. But I I just think it's, I'd rather have a book, um, I call it a code book, policy book, um, to have available. I think it's fine online and so forth, but I would also like to be sure that the official record in the clerk's office perhaps is what we have. So I think that's important. So I'm not trying to really give you a lot of work or or that, but.
No, I appreciate that.
And it helps me, I mean, I just.
I think this is more to make sure that we all know exactly what we have for policies than to to try and change anything specific. But if people have comments that, hey, please look at this section, we can certainly do that in the process.
Okay, sounds like a plan to me.
Yes, Kim?
May I ask a question just for clarity of my own self? Recognizing maybe speaking about policies. Did you, did you state? That you guys have already reaffirmed the accounting policy?
That one was either last year or the year before, the current board at the time did reaffirm that.
So that would've been twenty twenty?
Uh, one of the two years, I I don't remember.
Yep, no, um, so. My second part to that question. Everyone is fully well aware that that is recognizing that within the auditor's report, of which it states, that as they look at our books, it is not FINRA recognized and according to acceptable accounting practices. It is not within compliance with that and it has not been for a good many years. And yet we're accepting that as well.
So there's a difference between what comes back from an auditor with auditing reports and of course, the policies and general procedures. The, and this is not for the, the, what you're seeing in, for example, the accounting policies and pers- oh wait. I'm thinking of the investment one, sorry, the investment one is the one we reaffirmed. Uh, not the accounting policies and procedures. Again, it was boilerplate that came through NHMA and was checked over with NHMA, et cetera.
I understand that, so if in fact you read the auditor's record. Just briefly in our town report, as it's placed every single year.
Yep.
The auditor is, yes, doing their job. In what in fact this town is asking for, although it is not in compliance with acceptable accounting practices, and they do in fact state that. Are you okay with that?
I'm not sure that I've seen the specific phrasing that she's.
I need to look at that through campus.
Thank you.
I'm not okay with that.
I'm definitely interested.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I I know that there have been some things that we've certainly asked and been working on making more in compliance. And part of that has been like, hey, you're outdated on reaffirming X policy or the library policy. And some, oftentimes, it's actually happened. It just has, they just haven't gotten the updated copy with the new signatures. Uh, that actually happened with the, uh, library, I was kind of handing the library last year or the year before and didn't need to, cause they'd already taken care of it. So things like that are are ongoing, we're certainly always trying to work towards better compliance with that and making sure that our audit's better every year.
The auditor usually lists, um, what it is we need to work on, if any exceptions before.
I understand that, by them stating that they have done their job in accordance to what this town has asked them. They state and have for numerous years, whereas we've stayed with the same company auditing our books, that they are not in compliance at all. And when their review is done, it is not in compliance with normal operating accounting practices.
I'm gonna have to look at that, did they actually say they're not in compliance with?
Granted, I'm just a layman, but I interpret that as, it doesn't matter what we show them, it's going to be okay with them. Cause all their auditing is what we present to them.
So I will say that they come and look for a lot of things and we find it and get them. Dana has certainly put in lots of time finding all kinds of documents for them, uh, as has Wendy. And I believe, uh, our treasurer and deputy treasurer as well. The thing that I would, uh, the thing that I can think of that maybe they would be referring to that way, and this is conjecture, uh, but would be that in typical, uh, outside firm style accounting and auditing, you would usually switch auditing firms every X number of years. Maybe that's all they're referring to, but I definitely wanna know exactly what.
Yeah, I would review that, um, some of the GASP regulations, that could be as well.
They stated, they're doing their job, absolutely, they're doing their job. They're stating to every single person here in our town report, year after year after year.
Yes, so some questions, what exactly is that referring to?
With any auditing acceptable practices.
I I I would refrain from saying.
It is stated right in there, it is in black and white, absolutely.
Yeah, so let's find out exactly what that is referring to.
Do we need to change our policy in what we're asking our auditors to look at? For the money that they take?
We don't tell the auditors what to look at.
But we hire them contractually, correct? We are obligated to have our our books audited?
Actually, no, you're not.
Okay.
But the town does, I mean, I would, I would not recommend not doing it, yeah.
But if it's not in compliance with any sort of acceptable practices within their industry, who cares what we show them?
Then why don't they tell us what to do? I don't understand that.
If in fact you ask them to be in compliance of acceptable accounting practices, I'm feeling as if you may see a very different audit.
We'll need to look into that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. That has been a very big concern of mine for numerous years.
Okay. All right. All right, moving along then, we have motions and approvals. So let's look at the first of the draft minutes. Do you wanna look at the non-public?
Did we do the correspondence already?
Uh, yeah, he said that we didn't really have the correspondence, it was for the business exemption and we don't need to handle it.
Oh, we don't, oh, okay, yeah, cause I saw that, so I didn't, yeah, okay. Gotcha. I believe I'm here.
So that would've been six twelve, six and twelves, okay. Seven, which one do you guys wanna look at first? Uh, I see six in front of her, so we'll get that one.
We usually do.
Cause that's the earliest.
Earliest ones are first.
Dave, if you don't mind, I don't, John was gonna speak, I wasn't speaking for him, but I didn't know if you're putting him behind approving all that stuff or or ahead of it.
Uh, so that was, we're looking at your session as being a non-public based on.
Got, oh.
The, um, reputation of various folks, uh, so we're going to save that for the end of the meeting.
Actually, are you, we're not saying anything about that.
You know, reputation, nobody.
No, it's, it's not about what we spoke about last week.
From the description that we were given and the topics, I would find it hard to expect that there is not reputation involved. Not necessarily the same person or people, but.
We're, I think you're talking, he's talking about this, um, selling of town properties, but not the particular one that we had been discussing, it's something else.
So Dana, what was it that you had been given for information for their agenda topic? Cause I was not aware of the town properties portion.
I was not aware of that either. I was aware of the questions regarding, um, expenses for the town or.
Didn't get all my, didn't get all my answers on any of that, so can't talk about it.
That was, that was not for tonight.
Okay, well, I apologize.
We've got a lot of, a lot of.
Did I get any of my answers on what I was asking for any of that?
Which answers did I cover you looking for?
Dollars.
Um, I can give you the dollars, yes, I don't have them, but.
Did I get them?
Did you get them?
Yes. So I can't speak about it, I cannot speak about it, cause I didn't get my answers.
Okay.
He's talking about some.
So I got other issues, I was gonna talk about a land sale.
Phil's really, I mean, I can't do it on my.
It don't matter, I'll talk at the end of the night. Put me in order at the end of the night, I don't care. It's about a land sale.
Which, which, which property, which property?
I think what's it, not wins it there, it was Newport Circle.
Okay.
Get some questions about it. Some questions about it.
Does the board have... Have you been able to let the board know about that agenda item at all? I wasn't aware of that. Okay. Does the board have a problem hearing that now?
I wrote it down as accountability on the board.
All right, so go ahead, Ann. Come on up. We'll go ahead and move to that, and then we'll go back to our minutes and the like. If it does in fact start to sound like it will be non-public for various reasons, then we'll go ahead and delay it and do that at the end. I apologize because this was not the topic that I thought you were speaking on.
I ain't making anything personal. This is nothing personal. Anything I said last week was all open information for anybody. Last week, we talked about transparency. This week, I'd like to make this about accountability. I'd like to start this by asking the board a few questions. You put your glasses on. Thought you'd read my own writing. Which is had? I would like to ask the board, has any of this board read the sale of property policies?
Absolutely.
We... I mean, I... We were... We actually looked it up the other day, I think. Yep.
Did you read it before the sale?
Before which sale?
What are you talking... Which sale are we talking about?
Newport Circle.
The three lots.
Oh, merge them all? Right. Okay. What is your problem?
I'm just asking a few questions, please.
Okay.
Was the planning board and conservation committee in the... involved in the sale of this property?
The document that they had previously submitted based on review of properties, which I believe Dana has a copy of, was consulted.
On the sale of this property?
On any properties that we've been involved of as a board.
On this property that you sold? Did they look at this and recommend... give you any recommendations on this land?
We used the recommendations they had already provided in the document.
On which document? On this piece of land?
In 2017, they went... The select board, planning board, and conservation commission had a project. They went through all these pieces of land, and those were reviewed in that plan.
Okay, thank you very much. I just got to find my place. I'll get there. Who was the abudders notified on the sale of this lot?
I don't have the names, but it would have been the people directly around them.
Well, I would like the name of these people.
The O three, Jamie and Michael Dow, Bill Sturmaner, and Walter Mayfield.
When was the two public hearings held for the sale of this lot?
There were not public hearings held. There was an open bid held.
Okay, thank you very much.
Or I should say, there was a bid for... There was a bid process held for the abudders as being a Pillsbury Lake property. That is the way that the policy is written.
For Pillsbury?
For Pillsbury Lake properties.
That they... That the abudders get a chance to get the price refusal, they set the price of what is owed on that property. So the town doesn't lose any money. And then those... That's the way that I read it and I understood it. And those are the people that get the bid on it. So like... So they start at what's owed the town, and then whoever wants to... They have a bid. Whatever they can put the bid, and we were giving it to the highest bidder.
Were the properties merged before they were sold?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Because that's what Pillsbury Lake wants to do. They want their properties, because they're so small, you know that. So they're trying to get them merged, so we won't have a lot of little lots and little houses.
I have with me a copy of the sale... Selling of Properties. And I would like you to read what I have highlighted to confirm to anybody that is listening here that you have accepted the state statutes 4114A. And I would like you to read anything that I have highlighted in there. Now, that's not the state statute. This one here is a state statute. But I would also like you to confirm in your own policy that you have accepted the state statute and read what the state statute says.
Okay, so, the highlighted portion is in accordance with provisions of RSA 8080, 8042, 4114A. Then more, the town Webster and its select board is authorized, may sell properties, acquire, et cetera. Not highlighted is that vacant Pillsbury Lake properties shall be offered to abutting property owners first, with the condition that the two properties be merged. Then highlighted, other Pillsbury Lake properties that are adjacent can be merged to each other, may first be merged by the town and then sold as one property. Selling of other Pillsbury Lake properties listed in paragraph three and other town properties will follow these steps. Noting that that is other Pillsbury Lake properties, but the first set would be vacant Pillsbury Lake properties as we were handling there. The highlighted section here is acquisition or sale of land, buildings or both, if adopted in accordance with RSA 4114C. Selectmen shall have the authority to acquire or sell land, buildings or both. Provided however, they shall first submit any such proposed acquisition or sale to the planning board and the conservation commission for review and recommendation by those bodies, where a board or commission or both exist. After they receive the recommendation of the planning board and conservation commission, where a board or commission or both exist, they shall hold two public hearings, at least ten but not more than fourteen days apart on proposed acquisition or sale. Provided... So, that's what's highlighted. There's also, however, upon a written petition of fifty registered voters presented to the select bin and prior to their vote. According to other provision... Other RSA provisions, the acquisitions or sales shall be inserted as articles in warrant for town meeting, which you've seen in other instances and other lands. The provisions of this section shall not apply to the sale and of the... Sorry. Shall not apply to the sale of, and the selectmen shall have no authority to sell in some other instances such as town-owned conservation land or town forests. And that is that section.
So in my opinion, you did not have public hearings on growth of town policy on that sale of land. There was one other abutter to this piece of land that you did not notify. I'm terrible with names. I'm going to ask Kim Fortune, the other abutter behind.
Abby Rockefeller.
Abby Rockefeller. She owns two sides of that piece of land. She was not notified. So there's another person that was not notified on this sale. So there's another person that, in my reason, this policy was broken. And if you read the town policy article, I have it highlighted right here, other Pillsbury Lake properties that are joined can be merged by other... Excuse me. I'm terrible at this. Other Pillsbury Lake properties that are adjacent can be merged to each other, may first be merged by the town and then sold as one property. The selling of other Pillsbury Lake properties listed in paragraph three above and other town properties will follow these steps.
So, I want to say that I'm completely agreeing with what you're saying.
So what this is saying... Excuse me. I've got the floor, please.
But, one moment.
Please.
I will give it right back to you in one second. But you're skipping the part that is the second paragraph, which happens first. Which is vacant Pillsbury Lot properties shall be offered to abutting property owners first, with the condition that the two properties be merged. These are sold to the highest responsible bidder and must cover all transfer costs.
That's a single piece of land merging to their own. But once you take two or three pieces of land and merge it, then it goes down to sell as any other piece of land in town. You're taking... You're taking... No, 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 no. You're taking one piece of land, selling to a abutter. He has to merge it to his personal piece. But once you take three separate pieces of land, merge them three, now you're making one big piece of land.
Yes, one property.
That has to be sold just like you sell any other piece of land in town. That's what that Article three says.
So, I agree that it becomes one property.
That's why they put that provision in there. Has to be sold just like any other piece in town. That's why they put that exception in there.
And so, other Pillsbury Lake properties listed in paragraph three, which is your other Pillsbury Lake property that are adjacent and can be merged, may first be merged by the town.
Then it has to be sold.
Then sold as one property.
Then it has to be sold just like any other piece in town.
I think Pillsbury Lake has different sets of rules for Pillsbury Lake, I think. I mean, I wasn't here when it was...
No, 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 no. The town wants it. It ain't Pillsbury Lake. It's the town. That's why it says, once you merge it, it has to be sold like any other piece in town. So you've broke your own policy at least three times here. You didn't notify one of the abudders. You didn't sell it like anything else. That piece of land could have sold for at least $50,000 if it went out to anybody else out there. What's five acres sell for in this town? He sells for a lot more than $4,000.
So, there's a few things to consider in this. And I'll try to go through what I think are your points somewhat in order. The first is that merging is... makes it become one property.
That's right.
And so, once it is one property and it is still a vacant, that it is now one property, one vacant Pillsbury Lot property that should be offered to abutting property owners first. And so, that is following the selling of properties policy. It is also, to your point of costs, important to note that different properties have obviously different values. Some will have more value to one person, specifically an abutter, where they might be able to use it. Whereas previously, those three properties were all on a paper road and were not accessible, so would actually have an extremely low resale value of any kind outside of that situation. So, that's the second part there. And so, your valuations are going to be interesting and different in that instance versus if it was an actual road with a real circle and access to all three lots. So it would be extremely different. Regarding the rest of it, I think it would be something that would have to be looked into as far as the public hearing. But I believe we actually had a warrant article that set us up as the select board to in perpetuity be able to buy and sell property as we see fit. And so, that would go beyond that same public hearing process. And that's why, for example, we were able to do things like buy this all-chip property.
So what you're telling me is you can not follow any policies you want to write? Is that what you're telling me?
I'm telling you, we did follow the policy.
Whoa, whoa. I'm not hearing you right.
The policy has multiple sections. And so, the section that you're pointing out is not the section that is applicable. That's basically what I'm saying.
I'm hearing from one selectman. I want to hear from you other too.
Well... When we... When this was brought to our attention about this property that needed to be sold, when I, you know, I understood that the Pillsbury Lake, it was different than the rest and that, and when I read it... But maybe I'm not inter... Well, John, you know, everybody can interpret things. We already had this conversation about five minutes ago. But...
I understand that. Well, how about the other abutter that was not notified?
Well, that... We take the information, you know, or given or... I don't...
So is that the other abutter that say too bad?
I'm not saying that. You just brought that to our attention. I mean, we're not sitting up here thinking, whoo, I want to sell land for nothing. That's not... That's not what we're... Why we're all here doing it. We're trying to follow what...
I understand things.
People wrote before we came along.
There's several mistakes made here. The RSA says you're going to have public hearing. That's what it says right there, black and white. You're going to have two. That's what... And it's in your town policy. You're going to have two public hearings. That's the state statute. And you've got it in your policy. And now you're telling me that you've got some other policy that you don't need to abide by this?
So what we followed was basically the second line, the second paragraph in the selling of properties policy, which is that vacant Pillsbury Lake properties shall be offered to the abutting property owners first, with the condition that the properties be merged. These lots are to be sold to the highest responsible bidder and must cover all transfer costs. That's what we were trying to do. Now, one... It's certainly a valid point for not including Rockefeller if that is indeed an abutting land. However, it would also be a valid point to say that since it is in Pillsbury Lake and for Pillsbury Lake, that being part of the Pillsbury Lake district, the Pillsbury Lake maps, et cetera, would have been offered to the Pillsbury Lake residents.
Doesn't say that it has to be the Pillsbury Lake district. It says all abudders. Doesn't say they're going to belong to the district. It says abudders.
It says to abutting property owners first. It doesn't necessarily say all. That's actually an interesting point and sticking point which maybe we should look at.
This is... This is exactly, if I may. That's exactly what I was talking about when I said the wording. Because I've read this. Other people have read it, and they said, oh, no, it has to go to only Pillsbury Lake people. And I said, no. And I said, "No, it should say vacant Pillsbury Lake properties shall be offered to abutting Pillsbury Lake property owners" if it was only for Pillsbury Lake. So, when you do, this is a really scary policy because it can be read so many different ways. And that's, that's what one of the problems is, I think. That it's, it was read different ways. So, that's why it's important, when you're looking at some of these policies, some of the other policies, like, you know, that you're investing and all that, that's... When you get down to the nitty gritty, especially because we have a district in town, that it really has to specify everything. Because Abby Rockefeller's land is all in conservation. And she would have just kept it right in conservation with her thousand acres, whatever it is. But this is where it went wrong. Number two, and then number three, because the three properties were merged as one, and I don't know how many acres it made, but that's...
Something like two and a half, maybe.
Because, so that's the problem with, with the writing of the policy. It's not a good, not a good thing. That's gonna have to be gone over maybe with realtors and a lawyer, you know.
So I would agree that it makes sense to look at this policy and to try and clarify wording. One thing that is typically put in policies like this, and many others, is actually the last line that's in there.
I saw it. I was gonna ask you about it.
And I don't necessarily want to say, "Well, this is the whatever clause," but it kind of is. Obviously, we're trying to do our best to follow the policies and their intentions. But the last line is, "The select board reserves the right to waive any provisions of this policy as circumstances warrant."
Now, does that mean you can override the state RSA?
That's the policy, not the RSA.
But can you, can you really imagine? I'm about choked when I read that last article. I weren't even gonna mention that in here tonight. But can you really imagine somebody putting that in that warrant article? Not warrant article, excuse me, that's the wrong, the policy. But can you really imagine somebody putting that in there? I'm about choked when I read that.
It's actually a pretty common thing to do because exceptional circumstances do come up. And you don't want that to prevent something from being done.
Exactly, exactly.
But if somebody leans on only doing that last line, then it's a real problem.
Thank you for your time, folks.
Thank you. Probably not.
So, thank you. We're trying to see...
So, we've heard this presentation. We've been asked some questions. Do you guys have any comments or questions?
Did you talk to Abby Rockefeller and ask if she was interested in that property?
Yes, she was interested in it. I talked to her.
You did?
Two months, probably. And she said, "Yes, I'm very interested in that. Let me know when it comes up for sale."
Two and a half acres on Pillsbury Lake?
She owns probably three hundred feet of road frontage out there.
I realize she owns half this town.
She probably owns three hundred feet of road frontage down there.
Well, and it's not our intention to ever leave anything or anybody out. That's not mine. I don't need them to...
Our intention is just to, is to go forward, you know. So, just to tell you, simple things like this get overlooked. Abutters get overlooked. Because it makes it sound like it's only Pillsbury Lake abutters, but it's not. So, we're looking to go forward.
All I'm trying to do here is make sure things are...
I think it's content verification of the policy.
Yes.
All I'm trying to do here is make sure things are done right. That's all I'm doing here tonight.
Can you look into the warrant article that gave us the ability to expend and purchase? And how that interacts with the RSA? Yeah. Thank you.
I guess my biggest point is, I mentioned this a week or two ago. I think one of the first things any new member gets on board, their first project is to read every policy in town. Indeed, you made that comment tonight, before I even made a statement. You have not read very many town policies.
I haven't. I have, I...
And that should be one of your first things you get on board, is read every town policy there is.
Well, and that's easy to do, but that doesn't mean we'll remember every town policy you read. But, so, you know, whatever. I mean, if I have, I wish I had that kind of brain to remember everything I did, what I did yesterday, for that matter of fact.
I understand. Mine ain't there either.
You know, we also look to be guided and helped, and we are also looking to, do the best we can for the town, and otherwise, who would want to, you know?
And I still hold to the same thing I said last week or two weeks ago. Honest mistakes are honest mistakes. And I'm not trying to pin you guys to the table up there.
No, but it's just like when you use your word wrong. It's like, we don't say, "Oh, you used a word wrong, you better get out," you know?
And I'm not trying to pin you guys to the table tonight. That ain't what I'm trying to do.
He's passionate about it.
My voice is not a good one.
We're all passionate people, John.
We just want to go forward, you know, and transparency and accountability. Just move forward and hopefully we won't have any problems anymore. But there are policies that are just, you know, they just...
Speaking of transparency, that is a wonderful segue into one of our other motions and approvals topics. Do you have that list for me?
The list you should have, it's the non-public minutes.
Non-public minutes?
Yeah. So it's session two.
Oh, okay.
And then there's the list of all the minutes we're gonna...
Oh, that's...
Yep.
So July 12?
Yes.
So there's the first session.
Oh, yeah, here it is.
There we go. Thank you.
You got it?
Yeah. I was looking at the wrong spot. That's my fault. So, I'll jump to that before we go and approve our minutes, which is the unsealing of minutes. We spent some time in a work session, in a public session, going through, I believe, all of the sealed minutes from 2015 through 2017. And so we have a good chunk of them that we have decided no longer need to be sealed. And so to handle that, would either of you like to make a motion, or would you like me to be doing it with my wonderful raspy voice?
Oh, it's different. You make the motion too. So, yeah, on this, on this session two, with the whole list of things?
Yeah, because those are the ones we all said that we wanted to unseal.
Yeah, there's only like twenty of them. Do I have to read them all?
If you're gonna make the motion, yes.
No, then you can read them.
Okay. That's fine. I would move that we unseal the following list of minutes. March 2nd, 2015, May 11th, 2015, session two. September 28th, 2015, October 12th, 2015, October 26th, 2015, November 9th, 2015, November 23rd, 2015, December 7th, 2015, session two, May 23rd, 2016, June 23rd, 2016, July 5th, 2016, session two, July 18th, 2016, August 15th, 2016, August 17th, 2016, August 29th, 2016, session one, November 14th, 2016, session one, March 13th, 2017, March 27th, 2017, April 10th, 2017, sessions one and two, April 12th, 2017, April 25th, 2017, June 19th, 2017, July 31st, 2017, session two, August 17th, 2017, October 2nd, 2017, session one, October 10th, 2017, session two, November 6th, 2017, sessions one and three, and December 4th, 2017.
Oh, second.
I'm gonna do a roll call vote for that one. Myself, aye.
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 All right. So...
Do you look up all those?
I'm just looking at the...
Oh, my God.
I assume that they will become available on the website. They, it may take some time for that to happen. But the...
So you'll just scan them and then post it to all...
You can certainly ask either of our town administration gentlemen, and they can get you a copy as well.
There's only thirty-eight of them on the website.
No, I'll put them in regular minutes now.
Okay, so just regular minutes. I just want to make sure before I post them on the website.
Well, I mean, they're still not public, right? They're just unsealed, so that people can get them.
Yes, so people can request them, but I don't think they're posted on the website.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be the easiest way to do it now. All right. Obviously, we, on this topic, we ran through 2020 when we started it. We've done 2015 through 2017. It would make sense for us to do 2018 and 2019 between them to finish that list so we can say from 2015 up to current. When do you think you would like to do that?
When do you want to do that, sir? Daytime, afternoon?
I think a similar thing to our work session the last time works, unless you'd rather do it in the evening.
No, I'm too busy in the evening.
All right.
I just, I'm gonna be gone a few weeks in August.
I am too.
So either, either not being actually, or towards the end of August.
Okay. So why don't we look at, since we've got plenty of policy to look at, why don't we look at August 23rd, which is a Monday?
Because I think I'm gonna be on a train ride across the country just to think the truth. My kids gave me a surprise.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Yeah, my kids gave me a surprise. With all my kids, it'll be a while.
All right.
But I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure the date, it's like old home day dates, so, close to...
Well, let's figure out a time and...
Let's take it into the summer, to September.
That's good, maybe.
Yeah.
Slightly, they're going, they're not going away, no. All right, September, that's good.
Uh, let's see. We could, actually, we could look at August 30th. That would be the last day, and that's not gonna be... That would have been a select board meeting if it were every other. But since we've got first and third, we actually get a break day. So how's September 30th sound?
No, you said August.
Sorry, August 30th.
I'm not sure. That's, I just don't know what, I forgot what day. They send me this whole thing.
Sign in September. That one, man.
Well, September gets really tricky for me. Everybody's birthday and anniversary is in September. Along with several other, my other stuff that's major. I could probably do end of September.
Perfect.
So, September 27?
Sounds good. Okay. Sold. Three thirty?
Sure.
Okay.
That work for you?
What's the 27th? Is that Monday?
Yes. All right. So that looks good. And then, we have our signing of documents, our motions, and our draft minutes. You want to go through motions or minutes first?
Let's do it. Get rid of the minutes.
All right, sounds good. So, our first meeting minutes that we were looking at was July 6th.
So that's Rockefeller's lot right there. Those are those two lots, and these are the three lots. There's a whole property between you.
So it is not actually...
The Rockefeller property is actually an abutter.
Okay, Rockefeller's property is not actually an abutter according to the GIS tax maps.
Thank you.
Let's see. I do not see any issue with these comments.
No, I don't either.
Whoa, 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 yes.
I'm never gonna pick up a spilling thing.
He's putting, he's putting the gold star on each one. You don't need to...
Hey, but he's still smiling. Now, come on. Both of us still smiling, you know? That's the kind of guys we need in the office. No grumpheads.
All right, so, I know that we accept the meeting minutes for Tuesday, July 16th, 2021, as written.
Second.
On favor. Aye. All right, that moves us to the 12th, which was our last one. So we had the two non-publics and our public that basically says we're going to just have non-publics. So, please look at the public one and see if there's any issue that you see.
I hope not. That was so short.
It's so funny. I can't get used to that really deep voice.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you would, yeah.
I'll try the very white imitations later.
I think this looks good to me.
All right, any... All right. I would move that we accept the meeting minutes from Monday, July 12th, 2021, the public minutes.
Second.
On favor, aye. And, session one. Non-public session one.
I think I found a couple typos that I didn't update.
You found a typo?
Yeah, I was reviewing them. It's a little...
My God, I guess I'll have to really look hard because I don't see it.
Do I have that updated copy?
I don't think so. That's why I was commenting.
Gotcha. All right, I'll cheat and look over someone's shoulder.
Oh, there you go. Oh. Oh, this is, no, oh, that's this one. So he thinks he messed up, huh?
I know, it's the second that we were looking at, so that's what we moved.
Oh, he thinks that's the less than.
Any comments or corrections for that session one?
Looks good to me. Spilled the major, everything.
Tried.
It's the big one.
He just cut to paste, no?
Not gonna lie, sometimes I do.
All right, I would actually check for one thing.
You know what I would do, Russ, just for the heck of it? Instead of having to put the, oh, well, it's probably cut and paste. Like when you put chairperson after David, just put chairperson. You can leave the two parentheses out. And then put your, the business administrator, town administrator, new year landed. Just put that big title in front of your name. That comes out. That'll be six true. And then I don't have to correct it when I put the minutes in the paper, because you notice, I do, I always do that. I put your titles first. So she not, you know, it's a big thing.
I will take your suggestion under consideration.
Well, I didn't know. I think you probably cut and pasted it like that, but...
Well, no, that's how I did it the first time, and then I just cut and pasted.
Yeah, but just change it, because, you know, you need to have a big title. Right?
Yeah, I mean, even you've got the beginning of the minutes that has who attended, and you describe who it is. Do you need to say who they are each time?
Me, who to wait.
Well, no, because I think with...
Yeah, I just wanted to double it.
Yeah, and I... No, that's where I'm talking about, is basically the people present. So there's the chairman, so leave him as, you know, and then you guys, you have your own titles. And then you can just go through the rest of it.
All right, so, after review, I would move that we approve session one non-public meeting minutes from Monday, July 12th, 2016. from Monday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that moves us to session two, which we just looked at to get that wonderful list from.
Yes, right. Sounds good to me.
And... Yeah. And so, I would move that we accept the minutes for session two non-public meeting, Monday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that takes care of all of our minutes. That brings us to motions for the trustees of trust funds. There should be three.
Do what, three?
That's the traditional three.
Well, yeah, three, one, two, three, yeah.
Apologize, shouldn't have been stupid, so I grabbed it. Do you want to take this copy?
I got it now.
Oh, you could've taken my copy. I like stuff in my hands. Write on everything.
It's my conservation mind.
Yeah, I know.
I just want it in one place and then I'm done with it.
But I have some, I mean, I have notes from all the school board meetings, thirty years of them. I still have them in boxes, and all my little notes, when I write my book.
Oh, there you go. I would request that the trustees of trust funds issued a check in the amount of six thousand four hundred and ten dollars payable to Flea and Flower Farm for invoices six four six seven for one thousand two hundred forty-two dollars and fifty cents. Invoice six four seven zero for one thousand dollars. Invoice six four seven two for two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. Invoice six four seven three for one thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. These funds are to come from the Highways and Roads Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would request the trustees of trust fund issued a check in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty cents payable to Everett J. Prescott Inc. for invoice five eight eight zero one zero two. These funds to come from the Highways and Roads Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Request the trustees of trust funds issued a check in the amount of eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-five cents to Computech Integrators, Inc. for invoice five eight nine three zero dash two. These funds to come from the Technology Expendable Trust Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That concludes that portion. And, let's see.
Can I have one question? Can I ask Kim something? Um, Kim, the last time we talked about you wanted to do a cons, agricultural commission?
That's why I'm here tonight.
Huh?
That's actually why I'm here tonight.
Oh!
'Cause now, ready to start, it's not, it's too long.
Do you want her to speak now or later?
Do we have any other documents in here that we need to be taking care of? Or are we good?
Just got documents.
Aye.
Just signatures. All right, come on down. Laura's yours.
I just, I, I wanna do, do a status update. Status update, and that's what I was just reviewing outside. Um, last week, you were considering to go ahead and think about candidates. What I've done in the last couple weeks is, I've communicated with Susie Roberts and asked her, I have not heard back. I have not heard, I've communicated this afternoon. Just left a message with Gaila Rochelle. I have not heard back from Gaila Rochelle, as well as Nancy Reino, who's also interested. I've not heard back. Well, I heard, personally, we've heard back. Jen, and any other interested party? I mean, what, I...
Wanna put a little notice in the grapevine?
That would be ideal, ideal. All I would like to see is, I'd like to see it back active.
So if anybody is interested in the agricultural, is it committee or commission?
Commission.
Commission.
If anyone is interested in the agricultural commission, uh, please contact Kim. She's trying to get that going again, and, uh, we'll be needing members if that is to happen.
Okay. What's, what's the phone number to get you?
Seven two four.
Seven two four.
Yeah, let, let's not...
We're live?
Let's not do that.
Oh, okay, all right. Once you want to, everybody.
'Cause, 'cause YouTube is...
Can we contact the town office?
YouTube is a lot...
Can we contact, can we contact the town office?
Well, call me.
To give Dana my information?
Yeah, just, just give her the information, you can write.
And break that on the actual note.
I just don't want you having random calls from...
Correct.
No, that's fine.
We're not in any of that stuff, so... Sorry, not in the social media.
I apologize. Sorry.
I was trying to save you.
Well, I'm glad you did that, 'cause I don't...
Appreciate that. So, yes, all I'm trying to do is get it back active. Thank you very much. And thank you for considering restallishing it and getting it active.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, do we have any further public comment?
That's okay. That would be you today.
You made me fart in my face.
All right.
I have a question, but I'm not sure we'd go with it. And it's got nothing to do, it doesn't pertain to anything that you guys talked about tonight. So, want me to wait?
No, go for it. We, we can certainly redirect you if it's not pronounced or that we can't answer it.
Okay. Here's the business that moved into town. And it's a two-part thing with the businesses and... But this one is exempt from zoning ordinances because it has to do with, um, challenged individuals. But does that include, um, changing the property? Making substantial additions to the building? Does, is that also exempt and only come under the, the statutes of the state? And when you have an organization like this, in a very small community, are they just, is it supposed to just be accepted? That they can disrupt the lives of, and the peace and tranquility of people around them? If enabled, they, why do you think?
So, to, I believe I know what you're, you're talking about. And it's not that they are exempt from zoning ordinances. It's that they are not considered a business. They're considered a residence.
A very big-for-profit residence.
And the state, uh, in all its infinite wisdom, basically has stated that all of the residents that live there constitute a family. So it is considered a single-family residential dwelling, despite having multiple caretakers coming in that are essentially acting as an outside company to caretake for the residents. And that is my best understanding of why the situations become interesting when trying to reach anybody for an enforcement, because anybody that is part of the company is not actually the facility and is not actually considered the family or the residence.
Can I add something?
Please.
Boswell has the same problem. You cannot tell, and the residents were up in arms. The state, you have no choice. They can pull where they wanna pull. So, and they're right on the main drag in Boswell. I mean, well, residents everywhere. And that's, and it's, you, town has no say. They can do what they want.
All right, well, then, okay. Take that one step further, because that's the kind of person I am. Government does not dictate the sanctity of a private home. And the comfort of people who have lived in one environment or one home for thirty or more years, that needs to change. So we will designate everything farm property something else.
So what was that? I didn't hear that last.
Because, because, Kim, we'll designate all of that farm property, and then they have to go.
Oh, yeah, agricultural district.
I don't think, I don't think...
Our, our entire town is residential agricultural state.
Well, I understand that.
But I don't think there's anything you can do, I don't care what you zone your town. They don't, you, they can't, it's a, there's some kind of a little stipulation. You, you'd probably have to some, and I don't even know if you could change the law in Concord, not in...
Well, that's where you'd have to start, it sounds like to me.
Because I know...
Which you can, I mean, you gotta get a representative to put a bill in.
I know too that would do it. So, okay, and I'm, I mean, I'm joining this party late because I haven't been aware, I haven't been aware of anything for five years. But, um, now that I'm back on my feet, this is something that's really concerning, 'cause it will and does affect, if, if not right this moment, down the road. 'Cause the next piece of property that goes up to sale is up for grabs and...
So...
That's just a frightening, frightening...
I, I want to bring about the kind of awareness for another way to look at it, which is what kind of turns it into the legal conundrum that it is. Obviously, if they're trying to build within the setback, we can tell them, hey, you can't build within the setback. That's standard zoning, whatever. The challenge is because they're not considered a business, and so it would be very akin to if you or I went and bought a property and said, I'm gonna rent it to a family, and that family needs meals on wheels, hospice care, and several other things, and all of those workers are swarming in twenty-four seven. So, you can kind of equate it to that in a legal standpoint, at the whole point.
Well, to a degree. I had all those services at my house that didn't upset a single person in the neighborhood. You know, we had meals on wheels, we had bankers, we had attorneys, we had social workers.
But my point is not about the upsetting the neighbors. My point is that the same legal kind of infrastructure that says you're allowed to get all of those things is what says they're allowed to get all of those things. People who are caretakers and not following the road laws have certainly gotten lots of tickets down there. And...
Multiple arrests.
That, and apparently arrests. So, there's only...
Did you have a safety issue?
Did you have arrests?
So there's certainly things of that nature for the harassment and endangerment of the people in the surrounding community that we can address. But them being there, them being hired to be there, those are not things that we can address. That would require a change in the entire program that allows that, that situation and that institution to exist coming out of Concord.
Thank you. Will this be applicable to county or state?
State.
They're all over the place. They just opened one in Salisbury.
Yeah, Salisbury just got one as well.
Yeah, 'cause they were complaining.
They're all gonna be up in arms.
They, they already are.
And they have no police department, so you guys get double duty.
Us and state police.
I've got a friend who's a trooper, he won't put up with much.
So, uh, that being said, hopefully that gives you the right places to go ask questions and start making more requests.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you. But it's just like, I am stymied. I know. That's all I'll say. I'm just stymied that this is a lot to happen.
All right. Any further comment or question from anybody else?
I would like to say one thing.
Okay.
Thank you very much for the fervent effort and the time that you have spent in the commitment to unsealing all of the minutes. I mean, I, I listed as fast as I could all the dates of the minutes that you have unsealed that can in fact do and be. And I would just like to thank this board for taking that time and keeping that commitment, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And of course, that was a motion, so in the next set of minutes, you'll have the full list if you didn't write them down fast enough.
After September.
Well, no, that will do the next amount, but...
September twenty-seventh.
No, no, tho- those will be the next amount, but the ones you wrote down tonight.
Two thousand eight to ninety.
Yeah, you'll see that in the minutes. Because we'll...
And I just wanna say, thank you very much for taking that extra time, coming back in, 'cause that could be a big deal.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have an index deal, but...
Should we make a motion for that?
That's why I get trouble. I feel like my life's always on the line.
This board has taken that extra time of your own time and made the commitment to looking at them and making an actual decision on should they be sealed or unsealed. And I just wanna thank you all for taking that time.
Well, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Oh, we've got one.
Yeah.
This camp, over from D. Uh, so, we've got the code enforcement complaint form to... Hopefully, they've got a streamlined process to where everyone has to actually provide real information if they're going to make a complaint. That is for us to look at and to basically approve and, and let Russ start using it. I don't see anything out of ordinary here or that I see as a problem. Do you have either of you?
No.
No, it makes it look good.
All right, you get one.
Can you spell this yourself?
Yes.
Great.
All right. Everybody says yes, you're good to go with it.
I'll post it on the website tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Review, sir.
All right, yes. Beat minutes, beat minutes.
You should have multiple words.
So, it appear to have two that are the same and two that are different, is that correct?
So I need two copies for mine, one for my log and one for the dashboard.
So the sort of, so, great abadements, but two copies of one.
If you want me to go over the reasons for them, I guess.
I, I just wanted to make sure that that was the appropriate...
We have two that only have one copy.
'Cause I think a couple, couple words has a mistakes for me.
Means where the timber will have to change.
Yeah, that's 'cause I put the wrong amount.
Right. Why do you need some press book? Yeah.
Trailer and shit on the long lot.
You don't wanna wear it out.
Long lot and a registered camper.
That's right. You're gonna be here for the next twenty years, hopefully. So I can keep you alive.
I believe that covers everything.
Did I have anything else that was...
No. Yeah, I'm forever holding peace. I would move that we adjourn this meeting at eight nineteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eight nineteen, my god.
Thank you.
That's early for us.
Yes.
I will try to get these going fast.
Please, so we don't lose...
Thank you. See you later, Dave.